I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sherrell.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Counselor Grasso.
Here.
Counselor Lowndes.
Here.
Counselor Hines.
Here.
Counselor Penelacan.
Here.
Counselor Whitehouse.
Here.
Counselor Marconi.
Here.
Counselor Saint Laurent.
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silent prayer and then the assistant mayor will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance finished by God Bless America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and that it shall be held for all we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, God bless America.
Now, we're down to the presentation and Judge is going to come to the podium and give us an update on the holiday parade and then Judge I'd like you to come up.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, counsel. Always a pleasure to see you. First of all, it looks like we're going to have the biggest parade we've ever had. So much for the Republican economy. I said that for Anita Friedman, by the way. We are looking at 31 -- how do I spell that? 31 illuminated floats and 40 walking units and we will probably be adding another 10 before we're done. Specifically, wanted to let the counsel know that to arrive in the parade, if you could report to the lower City Hall parking lot where the Coast Trolley will pick you up and if you could be there at 5:30, then we'll roll you into the parade. They'll take you to Columbia Street, pretty much the same as it's been in past years. They will drop you off at the grandstand, which we will announce the entire city council and of course bring mom, dad, grandkids, whoever you want. We'll make sure we have plenty of seats for everyone. Then the Coast Trolley will come back after Santa who will be on a Portsmouth Fire Department apparatus as requested. They will pick you up there and then bring you back to the lower city lot. We've had several meetings with John and his group and I've met with the police this past week just to make sure that all traffic and all support barricades, barricaded streets, that everybody's informed with those. We are in constant communication with the police and I believe that's it. Let's just hope for good weather and I will see you all on Saturday and I'll be the guy in the weird hair and the bad makeup. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Judge, will you come forward and get your tip?
We're doing the Nutcracker again.
Not a lot, but it's a reminder.
We have a meeting on Thursday.
I know, yeah.
Okay. And they were even talking about it up at Phillips yesterday when I was up here. They were saying all of the hockey players had gone to the Nutcracker and boy, they did a great job out there in the ring. Thanks, Judge, very much. Now we're down to proclamations and I'm going to ask Alec to read this one. Human Rights Day December 10th, 2003.
City Council Chamber, City Hall, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, proclamation, whereas the city of Portsmouth is home to the Seacoast Group 550 of Amnesty International and Wednesday, December 10th is International Human Rights Day and whereas it also marks exactly one year since former President Jimmy Carter received the Nobel Peace Prize for his decades of untiring humanitarian efforts and cited human rights as one of the generally accepted goals of society and whereas December 10th also is the anniversary of the 1948 United Nations adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights thanks to the tireless efforts of former First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt, as chair of the UN Human Rights Commission and whereas Amnesty International Worldwide Human Rights Organization with a large and dedicated membership in the United States is welcoming the choice of the 2003 Nobel Peace Prize winner, a Muslim woman named Shirin Ibidi who has been active in human rights, activist in her native Iran. Now therefore I, Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor of the city of Portsmouth, hereby proclaim Wednesday, December 10th as Human Rights Day 2003. In the city of Portsmouth, an urge by fellow citizens to strive to follow examples set by these selfless humanitarian and work together to ensure the preservation of human rights throughout our nation and the world. Given my hand and seal, the city of Portsmouth is first day of December 2003. Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor of Portsmouth.
Thank you, Alec. Is Peter Sumseth here? Would you come up, Peter, in excess of? Sumshot.
On behalf of the Group 550 of the Seacoast of Amnesty International, I'd like to express our gratitude to the council and to you, Mayor, for this proclamation. We always feel that human rights is indivisible worldwide, so wherever it is in need of defending, we will be there to help. In our particular group here in the Seacoast, we happen to be trying to help two Iranian students who are imprisoned in Iran right now. So the -- this year's Peace Prize to an Iranian woman is particularly significant and at the same time, we're also trying to help a woman parliamentarian in Turkey who was imprisoned because of her Kurdish ethnic origin. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Peter. The next proclamation that Alan Sturgis is going to come up and get was done for Tom McNeil who was a valued and steadfast member of the Portsmouth Conservation Commission for more than 15 years and whereas, as a member of the Conservation Commission, he devoted countless hours to the preservation of our treasured nature's resource, resources in the city of Portsmouth and the protection of our watershed. And whereas, Tom was extremely generous with his time and expertise in participating in all of the work of the commission and whereas, he will be greatly missed from the Conservation Commission. Now therefore I, Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor of the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, do join with the city council in expressing our gratitude for Tom McNeil's 15 years of devoted service to our community as a member of the Conservation Commission. And I'd like everyone to know he passed away.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
I've been in touch with David McNeil. He's going to let me know how the family wants to have this done. He's very anxious to have it done, very quiet.
All right. Maybe screw the conservation or something.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Now we're down to the acceptance of the minutes for November 17th, 2003.
Move the bed, Mr. Allen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Public comment session, three minutes and we have two speakers. Our first speaker is Martin Cameron, House assessment.
Good evening, Mayor Sorrell, members of the council and the city staff. Martin Cameron, 469 Ocean Road, Portsmouth. Well, I wanted to address the new policy of the yearly housing assessments. I understand the concept was to go ahead and try to avoid, what do you call it, sledgehammer shock, sticker shock, or whatever you want to call it, but I don't think, in actuality, it's not working out that way. Not at least from the people I have talked to and from personal experience and so forth. We'll take House X in 2002 was assessed at, say, $200,000 and House Y at, say, $400,000. House X in 2003 had an evaluation, came out at $220,000 and House Y managed to stay at the same $400,000. While the tax rate went down from 1927 down to 1774, House X with the lower valuation, their tax bill went up, the tax bill on House Y went down. If we multiply, we run this out for five years, there's the possibility House X, which started at $200,000, might get up there to $300,000 valuation. House Y possibly might stay at $400,000 due to its location, maybe no sales around the neighborhood or whatever factor you want to throw in there. So in other words, in essence, what we are getting at then, we have one group of people who, not being singled out, but the way the bough bounces or the cookie crumbles, whatever you want to call it, they are paying more than their share than somebody else in the city. So everything is not, that's not fair. Basically, it's not fair. It doesn't, I understand, like I said, the concept, but in reality, I don't believe it's coming out that way. Now look at another little piece of that pie. We'll take an elderly exemption, say somebody had an exemption of $100,000 and the property was valued at $200,000. If the property goes on up to $300,000 and they still have that $100,000 exemption, the tax bill doubled. Does that make sense? So, what we have to do basically is just go by the rate and forget about the yearly evaluation. And so if everybody, if we all have the same rate, if it goes up or down, everybody is paying at the same rate. So I think if, I hope I made myself clear and I think we all understand that. I thank you an awful lot. I would like to make a little comment. I support the military troops, the forces of the United States who are defending the United States, all the people that live in this country, not divided up by political parties or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. The next speaker is Nancy Johnson and she wants to speak about the proposed amendment to the MBT.
North Mill Pond.
North Mill Pond. Very good. Buffer zone.
Yes. Nancy Johnson, 81 Clinton Street. Tonight is the third and final reading on the proposed ordinance for the change in the buffer zone along the part of the western side of the North Mill Pond and I hope when the time comes for your vote that it will be a yes vote. And I would also like to thank you for your recognition of Carlton McNeil.
You're welcome. Thank you. That ends the public comment session and now we are down to consideration of resolutions and ordinances and the first one is third and final reading, Chapter 10, Article 3, Section 10, Section 10, period 301, parentheses, A and 7. General requirements, by the addition of the following language, no structure, building, street, driveway, road, accessory structure, boat landings, or parking areas, except those serving marine proposals and which are otherwise authorized by this ordinance, shall be located within 100 feet of saltwater marsh wetlands or mean high tide line of the North Mill Pond.
Since we've had these two individuals for a number of months, and we've come to a mutually agreed employment contract for both, and the city council needs to approve these.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the proposed employment agreements for Assistant Fire Chief Stephen Achilles and Deputy Fire Chief Stephen Griswold.
Second. Discussion, Brad?
Yes, Madam, I just think the public should know that these are two fine city employees, and that the contracts represent salaries that are more or less consistent with what similar positions get in other cities around the state. I think it's quite a fair contract, and everyone worked very hard to reach an agreement.
Thank you. All ready for the vote?
Yes, Your Honor.
Uh, what?
Yes, Your Honor, may I?
Yes.
Also, I think the public should know this is a five-year contract, which the negotiators worked very diligently in order to get, five years.
Very good. We all ready for the vote now? Did you want a roll call? No?
Yes, I'll ask for a roll call.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Councilor Grasso?
Yes.
Councilor Low?
Yes.
Councilor Hein?
Yes.
Councilor Penalacan?
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Councilor Marconi?
Yes.
Councilor St. Laurent?
Yes.
Mayor Surratt?
Yes.
Unanimous? Right.
Madam Mayor, move to suspend the rules, take up item 11A2, the approval of security agreement between the city and P's Development Authority.
I second that. Discussion on this one?
Maybe John could...
Oh, I'm sorry, John, I'm sorry. I thought you were even there.
We need to vote on the suspension.
Yeah, right. All in favor?
Aye.
And aye. All opposed? Okay, John, uh, one abstention, one extension.
Your Honor, this item deals with a negotiated agreement, a security agreement between the city, Portsmouth and the P's Development Authority. It would be a agreement that would provide security services for the airport for one year, it's a one-year agreement. It's very similar to what we do with our private duty on roadways. We're going to be getting reimbursed 100% for any services that are provided out at the airport there on a on-call basis in terms of, they'll call ahead of time for needs for any flights. There are intermittent flights that do come in, and there are certain requirements in the federal law for certain activities by the police department. I won't go into the specifics of those, but to be assured that we are receiving 100% reimbursement for all wages, training, overheads such as administration, pension, workers' compensation, so it all goes as 100% reimbursement.
Move to approve the proposed security agreement between the city and P's Development Authority.
Second. Discussion? Councilor St. Laurent?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was a little reluctant to vote on this, to vote in favor of this, but after we had the work session, a lot of my misconceptions were, has given me to favor this proposal. It's only for a year, and it's not going to cost the taxpayers one dime. No new policemen are coming in, so I would vote in favor of this proposal.
Very good. We all ready for the vote?
Roll call, roll call please. Very important issue, roll call.
Mr. Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Councilor Grasso?
Yes.
Councilor Low?
Yes.
Councilor Hein?
Yes.
Councilor Penalacan?
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Councilor Marconi?
Of staying.
Councilor St. Laurent?
Yes.
Mayor Surratt?
Yes.
Unanimous? Unanimous, very good. With one extension. Now we're down to the public hearing. Notice hereby given, ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 3, Section 10, Period 301, parentheses C and A and 7. General requirement, by the addition of the following language, no structure, building, street, driveway, road, accessories, wait a minute, boy, there's a long one again, he's in my way. Accessories, structures, boat landings, or parking areas, except those serving marine purposes and which are otherwise authorized by this ordinance, shall be located within 100 feet of the saltwater marsh wetlands or mean height waterline of the North Mill Pond for purposes of this ordinance. This area begins at Bartlett Street and extends along the westerly edge of the North Mill to Maplewood Avenue. In parentheses, additional regulations are contained in Article 6. John, would you speak on that before we open the public?
Certainly, Your Honor. As you recall, at your August 18th meeting, you passed first reading to amend the article that you just described. In addition to passing a first reading on this matter, the city council established this public hearing this evening and referred the matter to the planning board for a review of the proposed ordinance amendment. The intent of the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance is to utilize the same requirements which pertain to Sagamore Creek and Little Harbor by applying them to northwesterly shoreline of the North Mill Pond in an area bounded by Maplewood Avenue and Bartlett Street. And as the mayor said, the amendment would create a 100-foot setback from the water for structures. The issue is whether to recognize the North Mill Pond as a natural resource as other parts of the city arose through the master planning process. As you may be aware, the North Mill Pond has been an intertidal area that has been the object of study and restoration efforts for over the past three or four years. Although this is the case, it has not been recognized within the existing zoning ordinance, which recognizes two other tidal resources that have been previously cited. This proposed amendment seeks to apply the same protective measures which apply to other areas to the area of the North Mill Pond shoreline. And I would just draw your attention that the planning board voted favorably to recommend this proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, and they had a couple slight amendments to your original first reading, which are articulated in Exhibit 1, and we would recommend that if this goes forward, that the city council move forward on Exhibit 1 as its replacement amendment.
Thank you, John. We'll proceed to open up this public hearing for the first time around, far against or simply two. Do I have any speakers? Come right down to the podium, please.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Evan Patton, I reside at 250 Clinton Street. I am standing here for environmental regulation, but against this amendment as proposed. The Sagamore Creek legislation applied to the Sagamore Creek area as a whole, a whole thing, everything from Rye to Newcastle, basically, the entire thing. This applies just to the western edge of North Mill Pond. It doesn't apply to Maplewood, the other side of North Mill Pond, across from Cindy Anne Cleaners. It doesn't apply to Nobles Island. It doesn't apply to Wichi Lumber. Everything on the eastern side, it doesn't apply to. If this is truly environmentally motivated, then it should apply 100% to 100% of the North Mill Pond, and that's basically what I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please come forward.
Nancy Johnson, 81 Clinton Street. I'm here to enthusiastically support this change. Over the past 23 years, a good many individuals, groups, state organizations, and federal entities have put a great deal of effort into monitoring the North Mill Pond, water quality testing, sewer improvements, salt marsh restoration. Additionally, the pond has become an extended classroom for our neighborhood elementary school. Passage of this change will continue and reinforce all these efforts ensuring the perpetuation of this important reef source for the city. And like the gentleman before me, I wonder why it's only being extended to part of the North Mill Pond, since existing structures will already, will be grandfathered or won't have any negative effect on anything that's already there. I would like to see this extend to the entire North Mill Pond. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members, staff. Like, two minutes ago, I...
Name and address, please.
Oh, Peter Bressian, I don't want to replace. Two minutes ago, I looked at this, and these people are right. You take in only a portion of the North Mill Pond. Is there a reason for that? Is, there's got to be a reason why only part of that is being taken into consideration, because there's no, on the other side, there's no, on the other side. But their comments kind of spurred my enthusiasm into wondering just why the entire shoreline of the North Mill Pond wasn't taken into consideration. Thank you.
After the public hearing is over, we'll have Dave Holden come down and speak to it. Now we're to second time around, do I have any speakers? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Dave Burdick, 151 South Street, Mayor, Councilors. Thanks very much for supporting this. I think this will help to preserve an area of the pond which is sensitive to environmental disruption from development, and in the long run make Portsmouth or keep Portsmouth a really wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Second time around?
Good evening, thank you again for this opportunity to speak to this. My name is Steve Miller. I live at 38 Thornton Street. A lot of interesting points were just made, and I think that's an interesting discussion about the other tidal areas in Portsmouth. It's interesting, even though my involvement with the advocates for many years, I always had the impression that the pond shared the same benefits and protections that the other areas in the city did in terms of the tidal buffer area. And I was kind of surprised when this came up, and I was also shocked at my ignorance that, in fact, there wasn't any on the North Mill Pond from the city standpoint, but there was the state regulations. So, I thought that was interesting, and it was something, you know, you learn every day, more about your city and what goes on. I am in support of this amendment to the ordinance. We've had some really good discussions at the planning boards, the public hearings there, some attorney pealing's made some very good points that I think registered with the planning board that gave the homeowners, the people that are there already in the buffer, some leeway with future growth issues, the same as the inland ordinance, and I thought that was very appropriate. And as you know, and mentioned, as John mentioned at the beginning, that this brings up the North Mill Pond to the same standards of protection that Sagamore Creek and other areas in the city have. I would be fully in... I would be fully in support of having this increased to all tidal areas. I think, I was thinking today about the North Mill Pond and why this wasn't, why this protection wasn't already there. And I think part of, I'm assuming, and just my reflections here, that I think part of that may be that it was never really viewed as a resource. The area was heavily, heavily developed, a lot of industry, a lot of portions, early industry was there. So it had a history of use and abuse and perhaps wasn't looked at as needing protection because it was lost. And I think with the work that we're doing now, we're seeing that perhaps it has been lost, but we can bring it back. It can be made into a valuable part of our city. And it's beginning to get that recognition, which I am very much in support of and think is a benefit to the city, citywide. And I think maybe some of those other areas that have been mentioned tonight also deserve that. Across the other side, of course, is mainly the railroad yard. And you look there along with some of the other industrial uses, and it's hard to imagine how this would help, but I think if we did extend to other areas, it would in fact help us in the future. And if nothing else, increase awareness and give us a discussion or talking point with the businesses that are there. So I would be in support of expanding this, but if this is a good first step to making that happen, I fully support it and I think it's a good move. Of course, as you know, buffers are very valuable tools that we have in our toolkit to help protect our water quality. They're becoming more and more important as we, as we build our density within our city. Portsmouth has a lot of impervious cover, some of the highest impervious cover of the seacoast area. And that brings with it degradation of the water quality. And buffers are very important, they're one of our tools that we can use to help turn that around, and they're very important to have an ecological functioning buffer to protect our water quality. So there's a lot of benefit citywide to do this. And of course, with the Phase 2 requirements coming on, this again will be another tool for us. So definitely in support of, and really appreciate it that we have a lot of voices out talking about it, both for and against. It's an important city issue. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Stephen. I want to thank you for all of the work that you've done to bring the North Mill Pond back. Now, I'd also like to thank Mr. Burdick, too, for the South Mill Pond. And I mean, you've just been great.
Well, thank you. Of course, it's not just me, it's the whole group and also you all and citywide. You know, the Great Bog was a real galvanizer for us, I think, in lots of ways, citywide. So it's a city effort.
Thank you, Steve. We have to third time and final time around. Do I have any speakers? Please come forward.
My name is Adolf Varanski and I live at 274 Baxter Road. It wasn't that long ago that the city wetlands ordinance read a buffer zone of 75 feet. And city officials didn't seem to think that was enough, so they changed it and made an amendment to the ordinance to make it 100 feet. So I don't see any reason why there should be another ordinance coming up. Because I assume that when the new ordinance was made of 100 feet, I just assumed that that meant all wetlands in the city of Portsmouth. So if it did, correct me if I'm wrong, if it did mean all wetlands in the city of Portsmouth, we don't need this ordinance, this change, amendment to this ordinance. I can't, I can't understand it. As the person that bought Bell Isle, I don't know, he's just gotten approval to build a structure 40 feet from the wetlands, another one 75 feet from the wetlands. What good is the ordinance?
Adolf, Bob wants to speak to it.
Mr. Bresciano, I believe that the ordinance that you're referring to in the past dealt with inland or freshwater wetlands, not tidal. And the tidal well and ordinances are not as extensive, or were not as extensive in the past as inland well and protection. So basically, this ordinance would be required to more or less duplicate the protection that's provided inland.
Thank you, Adolf. Third and final time before I close the public hearing, do I have any other speakers? Being no other speakers, it's closed, then I'm going to ask our planning director to come down and speak to the people regarding this. Dave Holden.
Honorable Evelyn Sorel, members of the city council, this proposal comes to you largely from the works of the study circle, from the planning board, and also a great deal of environmental awareness has attracted much attention to this particular area. The reason the concentration is on the residential side is because that's where most of the development potential is, and that's also where some of the regulations are the most lax. I think the planning board, and I think as a result of the study circles, I think there will be and there is an increased awareness of both sides of the Mill Pond. But for example, the easterly side or the industrial side is developed, federal regulations do apply to there. Additionally, the properties that are just across or just before the causeway from Maplewood are actually in the central business district. That is an area that should be sensitive and should be looked at, and I think the board would be suggesting that that would be done as part of the master plan, but they're acknowledging a specific concern of the residential side.
Thank you, Dave, very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Really, you know, this is a public hearing, we can't get into a question and answer things, Laura. What did you want to add?
I just want to know why the other side is not included.
But didn't we close the public hearing?
Yeah.
We're going to have a vote on this in a little while.
Yeah. We'll bring it up for voting in a little bit, all right?
Okay.
And the public hearing is closed, and thank you, Dave, very much. We're down to the approval of grants and donations. The first one is the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, $4,000. What's your position?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we authorize a city manager to accept and expend $4,000 in grant funds from the Department of Environmental Services, 2,000 C Local Source Water Protection Grant Program for Groundwater Well Security.
Second.
Your Honor?
Discussion, yes.
Yes, I think we should let the public know just what we'll be doing with that $4,000 at the Smithwell.
We'll be erecting a fence.
That's right.
And that thing is just around it?
Just around the perimeter of the well.
Very good, John. All right. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Internet crimes against children grant for $400,000. Somebody like to make some?
Show moves.
Second.
Discussion, yes. Councilor Grasso?
I'd like to list what they are.
Okay. All right, go right ahead.
The first one is a grant in the amount of $400,000 from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention for Internet Crimes Against Children. A grant of $45,452 from the cops homeland security, which offsets overtime costs. A grant in the amount of $107,686 from the United States Attorney's Office for Operation Street Sweeper Funding, which is to fund work of a special investigation unit. A donation in the amount of $1,000 from VSI LLC for the Portsmouth Police Honor Guard. And a donation in the amount of $100 from Legal Limousine for the Portsmouth Police Honor Guard. And finally, a donation in the amount of $1,500 from Walmart for the Family Services Division to purchase safety program materials. And I'd like to just comment, I'll be-
Can you pass?
I would pass.
Yes, all of them. Okay, very good. Discussion?
That need a second, Your Honor?
Didn't they get a second?
They did.
They got a second. Okay, discussion. Council of St. Laurent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Are there any city funds that, matching funds that have to go with any of these?
The grants that were mentioned here, to my knowledge, I don't believe there are any matching funds that are required. One note on the $400,000 internet grant, it's important to realize that it goes, we are the lead agency and then we distribute to others. So we are not receiving the full $400,000, but we basically are the administrator of that and get reimbursed for that as well.
I think that need to be known, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. No matching grants, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? We ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to the consideration of resolution and ordinances. Second reading, Chapter 10, Article 3, Section 10, Period 301, Parenthesis A and 7. General requirements. By the addition of the following language, no structure, building, street, driveway, road, accessory structures, boat landings or parking areas, except those serving marine proposals and which are otherwise authorized by this ordinance, shall be located within 100 feet of the saltwater marsh wetlands or mean high waterline of the North Mill Pond. For purposes of this ordinance, this area begins at Bartlett Street and extends along the westerly edge of the North Mill to Maplewood Avenue. Additional regulations are contained in Article 6.
Madam Mayor, move that Chapter 10, Article 3, Section 10-301, or 3, or 7 of the city zoning ordinance be amended as recommended by the planning board as shown on Exhibit 1 attached to the planning board's memorandum dated November 7, 2003, and to hold a third and final reading December 1, 2003, city council meeting.
Did I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to ask our city attorney a question, and that's in reference to a stream that runs, makes up that P's and runs all the way under Spalding Turnpike and dumps into the North Mill Pond. Now, I forget the name of the stream.
Hodgston Brook.
Hodgston Brook. Now, as it enters the Mill Pond, it's considered brackish water. Is that true?
It is, it is tidal into the Mill Pond, yes.
Now, we refer to saltwater marsh and salt, in the ordinance, it refers to saltwater marsh wetlands. Now, a smart attorney could question the little area where it comes under Bartlett Street and where the North Mill Pond starts as saltwater and where the freshwater ends. Is that true?
The argument, I suppose, might be made that the ordinance which is now in front of the council could be extended further up Hodgston Brook.
Without changing it?
Without, it would be a decision for the city council to make.
You know, that's just a question, and I'm concerned about what could happen in the future, because that part of the Brook, as it dumps into the North Mill Pond, is freshwater. And like I said before, an attorney that comes before a planning board or Board of DOA could request a change because it's considered brackish water, not freshwater, not saltwater. So it's just an issue that I'm concerned with.
Brad?
Well, I think, I think another attorney might argue that it doesn't make any difference since there's a hundred-foot setback on the inland wetlands anyway. But I was going to point out that when the planning board discussed this ordinance, there was some discussion about inland or tidal areas that it might not apply to, and we specifically included as part of our recommendation that this be a first step toward including all of the intertidal areas in the city and to create that 100-foot setback. This does not affect anyone's existing rights around the North Mill Pond. It's an important thing to do to preserve that intertidal area, and as I say, it is just a first step. The speakers were quite correct that there are other areas, such as the South Mill Pond, that this should apply to, and eventually, we will work in that, in that direction. It's a very important thing for the city to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Bill?
Thank you, Your Honor. A lot of good questions were brought up by the speakers on this public hearing. I am still curious, and I don't understand why both sides of the North Mill Pond were not included in this. And I would, I suppose I could make an amendment to have both sides. No amendment?
Your Honor, my day.
Bob?
The reason that we have a public hearing on these ordinances is so that people who may be affected have an opportunity to come in and address their concerns. The way this ordinance was advertised, it only applied to one side of the Mill Pond, so that someone who owned property on the other side of the Mill Pond would not have realized that their interests might be affected by what was going to happen tonight. So an amendment to this ordinance, which was to include the far side of the Mill Pond from the residential area, in my opinion, is too much of an amendment to accomplish without having another public hearing and giving the people who own property on the other side of the pond the opportunity to come in and represent their interests.
John?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. It would be my recommendation that we do pass this intact. I mean, if you take a look at Exhibit 3 in your package, the aerial map, it really is almost self-explanatory as to why we proceeded the way we did. It's quite apparent, when you look at the aerial view of it, it was something we felt we needed to do to respond to the discussions that took place. The side that was described as not being covered, you can see that, quite frankly, it's pretty built up. Not to say that we shouldn't look at this, I agree we should. I think the city council, through the master plan process, will probably be addressing, as Councilor Lowndes said, many of these other areas. But it became quite apparent to us and the staff after the study circles and after the discussion from the public that we needed to act immediately to bring this forward. And you're going to be seeing many of these amendment proposals as a result of the master plan. This is one in a series that you're going to see.
When the, when we have, our ordinance now that we have for 100-foot buffer in the inland waters, okay, addressed the whole city. Why couldn't the ordinance have addressed all saltwater inland? I mean, why did it, why do you just, why did it just go and specify a certain area? I mean, the 100-foot buffer is a great buffer, and I don't see why it didn't affect all inland waterways from the, from the saltwater.
Well, it's something that can be looked at, but I think it's important for the city planning staff along with the planning board to look at maybe unintended consequences that may occur from that. And certainly, it's something we are looking at. But we felt that to, immediately to move forward with this proposal, and again, as we go through the master plan process, there's going to be many of these proposals that are going to be coming through. So, and I would ask Dave to maybe add to that, because I think he's been involved on these issues for a number of years. The particular concern is the North Mill Pond, because basically, federal regulations would govern 100 feet, but in terms of residential, it can be reduced to 50. So when we were confronted with looking at the environmental impacts along the North Mill Pond, there's one particular, that whole shoreline is basically an area that is ripe for additional development. And this proposal intends to try to put the same regulations that apply to other saltwater areas to the same area. I think the planning board is in full agreement that they need to look at other areas. However, there are different issues with each. For example, your water, your tidal areas have also been used for marine resources and for marine work. So for example, the same regulation, if it applied along your commercial waterfront, would be very disruptive and very destructive. So it has to be rather finely tuned. Little Harbor and Sagamore Creek are not used predominantly for commercial uses, but when you're getting down to the North Mill Pond in the central business district, there's beginning to be a good mix of those type of uses. And for example, on the, on the commercial side, most of that land is owned by the B&amp;M. Most of their tracks are within 100 feet. So there isn't likely to be much development in that area, and we were afforded an opportunity to take a good look at that and to provide- to take a good look at that and to provide regulations or proposals that are more consistent with the ongoing uses.
Your Honor, unfortunately, I won't be here for the next session of the council, and this is a very important issue to me. So I would just, and I, and I agree that this, this particular item is a good item, but I would hope that the future City Council would be on, keep this in mind and keep on track on this so that this hundred-foot buffer zone be applied to the rest of the city, the inland waterways, not inland, but saltwater, waterways. So I'm very upset that I can't be with it to vote for the rest of them, but I do hope that the future council is very observant on these particular issues. And I will vote for this.
It's a long time to get a hundred feet, I'll clue you. Harold?
Yes, can I ask, Dave, just one question?
May I?
Yes.
Dave, was that a concern of the planning board and the planning department of what I've just stated, where the freshwater starts and the saltwater ends, vice versa?
Yes, and the way the board addressed that is this ordinance very specifically defines an area so that it can't be misinterpreted. Additionally, as Counselor Lowndes has pointed out, as soon as you get into the non-tidal areas, you do have protection for anything that's a half acre or more, it's a wetland.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Dave. Yes, Counselor Whitehouse?
Because of the implication of what could be coming as a result of this passing, I don't intend to support it or in waterfront property as I do. Once you set a precedence with an ordinance, then it can later on be amended to include others. And I really feel that protect my property and others along the waterfront in the plan mentioned waterfront property, commercial waterfront property, I don't feel I want to support this because I feel the risk is too great for me.
Very good. Any other discussion before the vote? Are we all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Opposed.
We're down to third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter seven, Article three, Section seven, period three, three, six, one-way street.
Your Honor.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Move to pass third reading of amended ordinance as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We're down to presentations and considerations of written communication. The first one is a letter from Robert Sutherland, the First Masonic District, requesting permission to hold a five-k road race on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, on two thousand four, at nine a.m. And Counselor Whitehouse has asked if he could read the letter.
Thank you, Your Honor. First Masonic District, three fifty-one Middle Street. Dear Honorable Mayor, the First Masonic District of Masons, which includes St. John's Lodge number one and St. Andrews Lodge number fifty-six of Portsmouth, due in conjunction with other Masonic lodges in our district, hereby solicit your approval and assistance in conducting a five-k race in the city of Portsmouth on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand four, beginning at nine a.m. We have agreed to use the out-of-hibernation five-k race as the logo. Mr. Daniel S. Silverman, a Mason of St. John's Lodge number one, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, is coordinator of the conduct of the race. It is our earnest desire that we can persuade you to be the official starter, accompanied by members of the City Council of Portsmouth for the runners of this road race. We would also appreciate any assistance that the city might offer to make this endeavor a success. A copy of the runner's race course is attached. The financial profits, after required expenses are paid, are to be used by the respective district lodges for charitable purposes within Portsmouth and other participating communities. I will act as the liaison between the city and Mr. Silverman regarding this race. Contact may be made with me at four three six one oh nine five, or email robert seven six one five care of AOL dot com. We thank you for your consideration in this matter. With warm regards, I remain respectfully Robert L. Silverman, Jr., President. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Did I get a second on that?
No.
No.
There's no motion there.
There's no motion. Harold missed the motion.
Yes, I move that we accept the communication and allow this race to progress.
Second. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on a minute.
I'd like to amend that, too.